All right, I would consider any changes or additions to the agenda. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the most important aspect of today, principal appreciation. It's so nice to see you all here today. Thank you so much. Jay?
Yes. Well, I'm gonna start with a poem. And then we'll move on to some certificates and something more. All right. Good evening, principals. Guess what we say? You make our schools pop every single day. You cheer, you guide, you help kids grow. You're the butter that makes our popcorn glow. When things get tricky, you never stop. You handle it all with a pop, pop, pop. You sprinkle kindness, joy, and care, and spread good vibes everywhere. So here's a thank you big and loud from all of us. We're all so proud for every day that you lead our crew. We're popping with appreciation for you. This is very, very small token, but I hope that you hear, I hope you already know how much I appreciate you. I hope that comes through loud and clear, but I feel like we gotta amplify it tonight because this is all part of our principal appreciation month. They, they, you do so much good work that we actually had to give you a month. So, but hopefully, hopefully, every single day you know how much you're appreciated. You, you, you all work really, really hard and really long hours. And that cannot be overstated. You are always where you're supposed to be. And there's been a lot in the last few years that you've gone through with COVID and just all the challenges that go with public education in, you know, these days and in these last few years. And so just really, really do appreciate the grateful that you do. And with that, why don't we have you come up one by one? And actually, Allison, why don't you come up first? So, there's a degree of appreciation. Allison signs that a 1.0 is not enough. So she's a principal, at least 1.0. And then she's also our PIO, another 1.0. So we get double, we get double, double appreciation for you for what you do and, and the way that you promote our district and, and each of our students. Really appreciate it. Appreciation from you.
Awesome. Got it.
Well, Amy, I, I think you know again of the appreciation that I have from you and our board has for you. You're kind of our last, you're our last stand. Yeah, you're not over. But you're probably the last before we send people off into the world. And so all the hard work that is done up till now would be for naught if we didn't continue those last, right till the last day of school and beyond to try to achieve our, our vision and which is we want preparation for life. We want our kids to go out and do really great things, and they do. And also they all graduate. And, and, and they're very ready for service to the world as well as success in their careers. And so just really appreciate everything that you do. Popping with appreciation for sure. And Sheila's not here, and so I have something, yeah. And so if you hang up when we get done, then I'll pop over there. I just happened to be over at Lynn's school the day earlier, you know, walking through. And I, I was just so impressed with the way that all of the, all of the teachers were very engaging in how they were delivering instruction. But also they were bonding with the students. And I was impressed with the way that the students likewise were very engaged and very, they were really striving for it to do the very best they can. And I, and I think that you've done a great job creating an atmosphere there, an environment that's, that's very inviting, but also with high standards. And, and so I'm just really proud of what you've done and continue to do there. And so with that, you're the butter on the cake. All right, Amy, I see you next.
Not bad for eight days.
Yeah, by the end of the year, wouldn't know if it was pitch or otherwise. Well, Amy, we, we do appreciate the fact that you're willing to join us, especially this time of year. And, and you're already off to a really hard start. You and Allison, very, very hard to, to make sure that our students are all taken care of. You know, things about safety, discipline, and, and academic rigor, and, and a lot of just kind of bonding, just kind of making sure that kids know that they belong, that they're going to, they, that's the best place to be. I, I've already said it, you know. Best place that you want your kids to be in the middle school, it's right here. This is where you want them to be. You want them to be at Eatonville Middle School. And that is just gonna get better and better as, as time goes on. And so we're looking forward to leadership. I know you have a, an evening plan, kind of get to know the principal and the state of the nation. Of ours, to Eatonville Middle School on the 14th, and so we'll be there to support you. And, and we're here to support you all the way as you continue to work really hard to, to make our kids some more successful as they possibly can be. So you're, you're kind of a colonel already. Allison, please, come on up. I don't know how I can say this loud enough for you. You, right from the beginning, have just stepped in in any role that you can. Doesn't matter if it's as a, as a leader, as a teacher, as, and anyway you can. Last, last, at the end of last year, I tried to find Allison, like several times. I just kept going over there trying to find her. And they say, oh, she's out with the kids on the, on the recess. Oh, she's in the class, you know, with, with math instruction. Oh, she's helping over here, you know, you know, the, with, with this recognition and things like that. And so you, you've just worked so hard, and I know your heart was with Eatonville Middle School kids. And I know that's one of the first conversations we had. You said, I love middle school. This is where I want to spend my time. This is what I want to do. And to be a leader, to try to reach as broad as I can, you know, to, to make the biggest difference I possibly can. That really shows, you know. I know she's sleeping a lot, and, and I'm sorry.
More now, thanks, Amy.
And you, you know, you, you really, really worked hard and stepped up and, and will always be, you know, very grateful for you. And, and you and Andy are going to be just a real powerhouse together. And we're just looking forward to all the great things that have come. So with that, we appreciate, I'm running out of popcorn jokes. But we do appreciate the fact that you're doing, really do appreciate everything you're doing, and just showing.
Thank you very much.
Nick, come on up, please. Yeah. Well, Nick and I also talk quite a bit about a lot of things. And, and but mostly the, the conversations just always leave that kind of team, and it seems like the systems and that you're finding it in place and the way that you're building your, your team. Because, you know, obviously, we're all here for kids. And to, and those who support kids are stakeholders. But of course, that starts with employees. And you've worked very, very hard to make sure that your team is kind of all on, on, on the one page and really aligned. And it's all directed to students, because when you, when we're all directed towards students, all our differences go away. It's the same reason, and you can't fail. So, and I know you grind quite a ways, and you also are here real early and late at night. And that, that does show. It really does. And it's fun to walk around with you on the recess or some places and have all the kids come up and you want your attention. They, they, they care, but you wasn't, and they really don't care about them. And that, that really makes them always want to be the front. Wherever you are, they want to be. So that speaks volumes that you don't just walk, you don't just talk. You want to talk. And so appreciate that and all that. Well, you, very much. You're saying so. Best is yet to come. Yeah, well, I'll get this to Sheila as I'll, I'll. All right. So, yeah, so just in, in closing, in summary, I just could not be more proud of the work that you're doing, the way that you're focusing on students. She lets them take our strategic plan very, very seriously, and, and you lead the way. You give a million and amounts of time to the success of our students. And as we said, the message had to come. First hit our stride. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. And yeah, thank you, Toby. It can't be understated. I really appreciate the good work you face these. You're champions. All right, now on to reports and presentations, which is the other most exciting thing we get to hear from you today, are the great plans you have for your school. So we'll start with the high school and then move on down. You guys all have the agenda. So go to high school, middle school, Eatonville, L, Weyerhauser, and then Columbia. Yeah, well, I think, I think you can move the camera to Steve.
Into the chair next to Karen.
So I, I think that you have the whole, the whole preschool school program plan in there. But it's not, anyway, the one teacher kind of has the little summary. Especially false advertising is front and back. So I guess that's a really lucky. Just, when looking at our goals, like we continue to have our goals around, we have the district goal around special education, attendance, and then looking at academic success. And so when you, when we kind of look at big picture of where we're at, where we're starting this school year, our strengths just continue to be our graduation rate, which is great. I, if you look on the, on the table, that bottom thing, 23, 24, we had a 98.3% grad rate. That was, we had one student that was a dropout. I mean, you guys get those, that information in June. You know the details on that. And then 24, 25, we had two. So it's trying to keep those numbers as low as possible. I'm hoping for one year, for zero. But it's, I mean, as you guys know, like we talked before, I mean, it's tough, because once they start with us, if they, if they end up not graduating at some point, then that's on us. So, but that, that is a strength that we work really hard to kind of maintain. We're really happy to see that growth in the ninth grade on track data. I talked with you guys a little bit last year when I did the January, when you guys were at the building for, in January. We've worked really, really hard with our ninth graders kind of starting off, and we're going to continue that work this year. We've used that foundation tutoring money to really target ninth grade. And it's, it's making a, a good impact. So we continue to have low discipline rates. We, I mean, when you look at what OSPR reports, it's half a percent, and I don't, I don't really calculate that number of occurrences. I don't know how they calculate it out. But I mean, I do, we do know that we have a, a low discipline rate. And we're, again, that's one of those things that we protect, and we work really, really hard, Sheila and I, we, we talk a lot about. We're gonna take on all the low hanging fruit, the small problems, because that just sets that culture that, that we're here for business. We're a generation. One of the, the things that's, that's data that you're not going to see anywhere else in the school program plan, it's not something that we track. But, you know, we've spent time and energy and money on those environmental sensors in our bathroom, the vape sensors. And we've really tracked that data for the last three years in terms of occurrences when those sensors are going off and who's, who's in the bathroom, even if we don't necessarily, like it might be a passing period, so there's multiple kids in there. And what we consistently see is it's over 60% reduction in just occurrences from September to June every school year. It's frustrating, because what we see that sometimes the same kids, like they might be pretty well off of it by the end of the year. Then they go home in the summer and they're working, or they're out with their friends. They don't have the same kind of accountability. And then it kind of picks back up this time of the year, and then we can kind of get it down. But the good news is that, you know, we do a lot of, I mean, obviously the education piece, but really it is more about the relational capital that we're able to leverage and just really encourage kids to quit. And I know we've talked about this before. We took kids to the state legislature last year to talk about that. Our kids that are, that are really addicted, they're starting in like second to fifth grade. So, so that's a challenge for them. But anyway, it, it, it feels good that we are consistently seeing a reduction, that the sensors are not just about getting kids in trouble, it's about getting kids off tobacco. So, so that's, that's something that we're happy about. We continue to have challenges with, you know, achievement gaps for students with disabilities. Something that we're gonna kind of work on for the rest of our days, probably. But, and then attendance, we, we still, we don't have, OSPR has not updated the report card. I don't have that data for, and I don't think any of us have that data for last school year yet. But the previous years, it's fewer than 70% of our students that are attending over 90% of the days. And that's excused and unexcused absences. There's just a lot. And, and it's kind of a little bit of a culture that, I mean, I don't, like, I don't mean the high school, I mean, like our community, that, and it's not even all bad things. They're taking off for vacation, they're taking off for hunting season, and they're, you know, doing things, living life. But we really want to have them in school. So our goals, I, I kind of listed the 25, 26 target area on that table, and then our progress in last school year, because the goals haven't changed a lot. We're still working towards the same things. So special education achievement is really a little bit interesting data. So we have four, we had 14 students that tested last year. So this is an N of 14, and it's gonna be different. It's, it's very, it's gonna be very unstable data. So our math increased 46%, and ELA decreased 21%. So, but again, those 14 students, it will, could look very different next year. We did see with attendance, we did see a slight increase from 22, I'm sorry. Yeah, from 22, 23 to 23, 24, it was 63% to 66%. We don't have the data yet for 24, 25, but based on the best guess we can make with the reports that Heather's able to run out of Skyward, it looks like we might be closer to 70%, which I'll take it. I would be thrilled if we were able to make some progress. But we're still shooting for that 80%. And then, you know, once we hit that, then we can continue to push on from there.
I'm sorry, do, you sort of excuse Anna, because was sports included in that as well?
No, school related isn't.
It isn't, no, even though that's a excuse. Okay, thank you.
Academic success, kind of looking at that, continuing that, we keep shooting for the increase in students meeting state standard. The state kind of has shifted how they are reporting scores now, so they're, they're including the level two scores as part of that foundational knowledge. So when I'm talking about our 24, 25 progress, I'm taking that into consideration. So really math had an increase of about 1%, ELA decreased 6%, but it's still around 80% with ELA. And then our science had a significant increase of about 8%. So our ninth grade on track went from 79% to 85%. And I talked about grad rate already. So I just wanted to kind of look at the, the two board goal, or the strategic plan goals, academic success, and then the preparation for life. And we talked, we talked a lot about academic success last year. So, I mean, I have a lot of those strategies. They are gonna continue the targeted interventions, differentiated instruction, using the early warning system and panorama. It's, we don't, we don't have the IREDDI data that some of the other schools, we really look at A, B, C, attendance, behavior, and course grades to help us track those students that are at risk. And, and then looking through our MTSS kind of continuum, I guess, in terms of what kind of interventions those students need, whether it's an academic intervention, a behavioral, or some type of an attendance intervention. Attendance is a tough one, because the kids, it's, it's a tough one, but we work at it. So, so we're continuing that. We're gonna continue our lunchtime tutoring and our credit recovery options for students. That, that is something that's very prescribed. There, it's not really that optional. We have control during the school day to some extent. And then the after school options are, are continuing with, you know, like our math teachers are there every day of the week. And it's, it's really mostly, mostly math and science, where we have kids at, for after school, getting help on different things, but it can be other areas too. So, the social emotional learning, we still have our counselors going in and doing lessons with our ninth grade health classes. And then doing kind of small groups. We still have our partnership with Pensano with a substance use group. And then they also do some other groups and individual counseling for students. We, the mental health through fitness program is something that Tony Reed, our security person, had, he started that last year. And we're expanding that. This year, we did actually request some additional funding from the foundation. So we're really excited about that, to get that expanded. And Tony has connected with, actually, Ryan Antison. You know, Allison's Ryan, but we claim that is our Ryan, to help him. And Ryan's like such a great, he's young and he's very engaging. So I'm trying to really target students for that, that are not, they're, obviously, they're not involved in athletics already. Sometimes at least they've been involved in athletics, because they are, they realize, oh, maybe I can't do this. But we're just trying to get them from not just roaming the streets of Eatonville or hanging out at the skate park, trying to get them connected to other students, getting connected to school in a positive way. We continue to, to work with our instructional framework and trying to just ensure excellent instruction is happening in every classroom, every period. And then one of the things too, that I'm gonna talk about in the preparation for life, is that we have, as we've expanded college and the high school, we actually had a big leap this year, and we're gonna continue to expand it next year. It turned out that almost 40% of our teachers have now participated in training through the universities at Eastern and Central. And there's, so in addition to all the work that we're doing here, they're getting training from the universities as part of that, and also being observed by university staff. So kind of nice to get feedback from that, from the universities in terms of what they see in the inspection that's happening in the classrooms and things like that. So, so preparation for life, one of the things that we're starting this year is we're talking, so I know that the preparation for life on the strategic plan really does talk about like that high school beyond type thing, but we're also looking at that more in the soft skills, those employability skills. That, that we were recognizing, good attendance today, and the quote of the day was, the best ability is reliability. So, but these are the things that, you know, we recognize that they're leaving us and they're going to either higher education or they're going to the workforce, and they need to be good employees. We want them to come out and be responsible adults. So we are implementing a self-assessment and some goal setting in advisory related to employability skills. And so really looking at, asking them to look at your grades. What does that tell you about the kind of employee you might be? Let's look at your behavior, attendance, things like that. And just kind of pushing on them to kind of be thinking beyond just that the decisions that they're making are not just about what's happening at school, that it really is that preparation for life. We really want them to be mindful about what their future might look like. So.
Even your cell phone policy, as an employer.
Oh, yeah.
The fact that kids are being taught to put their phone away by moment.
Yeah.
I don't know how many kids come and work for us one time, and I see that cell phone, and they never come back.
We're still working with a dress code, okay?
Yeah, dress code is another one.
Yes, that's, that's a challenge. That will have to be an employer conversation. So don't believe us.
Yeah.
So college and the high school, so I put, the, there's a, there's a big chart on the back, which I kind of want to talk through. But we have expanded that. So the state of Washington a few years ago, so they used to charge, we used to have to, kids, we used to have to pay for college and high school. And then the state was like, well, we're paying for running start. This doesn't seem fair. And so now there's no cost to students, there's no cost to the district. It's just a thing. And so we have, we partnered with Central a couple of years ago, and primarily for math and science courses. And then in talking with the SPSL principals last year that I meet with them once a month, just, they are like, no, no, Eastern. Eastern's got like really great options. And so connected with them, and so we've expanded to our English classes and social studies classes, Spanish through Eastern. So, and then we met with the, the staff at Clover Park a couple of weeks, a couple of Wednesdays, actually, it was last Wednesday. Oh, maybe Tuesday, it doesn't matter. So they, so we already have dual credit options for our students through Clover Park with the technical CTE classes. But they're also offering college and the high school. And the, the real difference between dual credit and college and the high school is just really kind of the, the backend pieces. So for college and the high school, the kid, and this is true for Eastern, Central, Clover Park, whatever, they have to actually register for the college. They apply to the college, they, you know, they, they go through that process. They get a student ID number. They register for the classes. It's just more front loaded with dual credit. It's kind of happening, and the kids aren't necessarily aware of it. And it's the steps that you have to go through. I mean, we have a whole page for, here's how to claim your dual credit. It is a hassle. It just is a hassle, because some of it's at Pierce, and some of it's at Bates, and some of it's at Clover Park. And each one of those schools have their own kind of way of getting in, and you have to pay, and anyway, you have to pay, pay for the transcript. But, so we're, we're gonna pilot the college and the high schools, Clover Park, and just kind of see how that goes. And that would be actually in addition to the dual credit. So it wouldn't be like kids would, like if we go college in the high school, they don't lose the dual credit opportunity. Every kid will kind of have the option. They either sign up for the college in the high school, and if they don't, they're still getting the dual credit. So there's no, there's no negative to it.
Will that be part of your parent presentation, so parents can?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yep. So we have, 75% of our students are enrolled in a dual credit CTE class pretty much every year. It, you know, it fluctuates, but it's about three, four of our students. We still have our partnership with the Pierce County Skill Center. We have 41 students enrolled at Pierce County Skill Center this year, which is almost double what we had last year. We had about 24. I think we were just under that 25, which was the number we kind of wanted to shoot for. And this year, we have the highest number of running start, because we've had a long time. We have 69 students that were prepared for and are now enrolled in running start. So we, in looking at this, the back side, I have here adopting it there. This is the, this is the college and the high school and dual credit options for students that are available at the high school. And this is something, so again, this is like college and the high school largely expanded this year. And then we're gonna continue next year. We're gonna add on our 11th grade history. The US history will also be a college and the high school class. So I think the goal is to hit that 90 credit mark, because that really is when we can talk with students. Because what, what happens with our running start kids? They want, they want the two years, which is about 90 credits. They want the associate's degree, but what they don't like, and what we, what we deal with a lot, is frustration from parents. So you're sending your 16-year-old off, I mean, I don't know if you experienced this, sending your 16-year-old off to college, and the college will not talk to the parents. So we have a lot of parents really frustrated, like their kid's not doing great. They're like, we didn't even know. They didn't tell us. Like, that's how it works in college. Very many of our families are uncomfortable with their students driving all the way. I mean, it's a long drive, especially like you get from Ashford. It's a long drive to Pierce College. It's a long drive to any of the community colleges. So just trying to make sure that there's good options for kids. We've kind of shifted away from advanced placement classes and more towards the college and the high school, because here's what, here's what has happened with advanced placement. So let's take English as an example. You can take the AP English exam and get a five on it, and then the university will take that. And they decide what kind of credit they're gonna give you. And very often, they're giving you elective credit. You're not getting, you're still going in and taking English 101 and all this stuff. So it's, it's not as beneficial to our students as we'd like it to be. College and the high school, if they've got English 101, they've got English 101. They've got English, they've got those things kind of going in. And so, so we've got psychology, our civics, civics and CWP. So those two courses, every, every single kid that's in those classes, that's all of our seniors that are in the civic CWP. And then the psychology, they have the option for college and the high school. They're not, it's not like we have regular civic CWP, and then we have a separate college one. It's all of that for those. With English, they wanted to just kind of have separate kind of like, but we, but we've done with the AP, at least for this year. We'll see how it goes. So this year, our college English 12 is English 101. In future years, it's a different number that I can't remember, because they, they will, they will have had English 101 as sophomores, because our sophomore English is also just 101. And then English 11 is that English 170. Our Spanish 1 and 2, those are both college and the high school classes. Got a math decision-making class, which is also math 101. So it's a class that kids can go out of geometry into, or they can finish pre, Algebra II, and then go into that class, so it's a little bit more accessible to students, and then pre-calculus. Both, all of our weightlifting classes, Jeff Wilson teaches two conditioning classes, Gavin teaches two advanced conditioning classes. Both of those classes are college and the high school, or four of them, but, and then human body systems, that's our anatomy class that Tara teaches, is that biology class. So that's a total of 72 credits available for students. And that's taking our classes here, doing the same work. Every kid that's in those classes, whether they earn the college credit or not, they're doing the same work. It's the same level of work. They align the core syllabuses with the college, with what they're doing at the high school here. And every kid, whether or not they get the college credit, they get that designator on their transcript, or they've taken a college in the high school class. So it's really beneficial to every kid, even if they don't earn the college credit. And then I listed, just because I don't think I've shown this to you guys in a long time, the dual credit down below. And then I listed, just because I don't think I've shown this to you guys in a long time, the dual credit down below. For all the classes. And so what you'll notice, like, for example, like, look at photo media kind of right in the middle of the list. So one-year class for us, but they're getting actually a different class each quarter at the community college. And so that is a total then of twelve credits. So they can earn over the course of the year from one high school class. So, but again, the dual credit is, we're, it's not as easy to claim as we'd like it to be. So part of, I guess, one of the things I just want, I wanted to share the rationale around college and the high school and part of why we have really started to push for this and kind of head down this path is that there's just a lot of research that shows that students are so much more likely to pursue education beyond high school when they already have had that experience. They're like, I've already done some college classes. I can, you know, I, they have that. And so we actually saw last year. So with our class of twenty-twenty-four, seventy-four percent of our graduates went on to community college, technical college, a four-year university, military or an apprenticeship. But in twenty-twenty-five, eighty-seven percent of our students did. So. I love to see that when they're marking what they're doing, I like to see that employment number going down, down, down. Cause we know that if they can get some additional education, that they're going to increase their income potential for the rest of their life, which has huge, huge implications for them. So we're just, I mean, it's only been a couple of years. It's a little too soon to identify a trend, but we're hoping, we're hoping that it continues. So. And we actually saw a four percent jump in for your college attendance in that, those same years too. So. Anyway.
Wonderful.
That's my big, that's my big spiel. What questions might you have?
Are you finding that the, if a student gets a dual credit like from Eastern or Central, are you claiming that the other state universities are accepting that credit if they don't? Cause that's.
I think one of the, I think the legislation says that the state universities have to accept it. I'd be curious if out of state, but it's probably just one more piece of paperwork that they need to do. And I think a lot of it is just getting parents on board to understand what they need to do for their kids.
Yeah. And the other thing that we're, that we started last year, this is, we started at the end of the year before last. This was our second full school year with participating as part of the Washington Guaranteed Admissions Program. So we submit, like they, they kind of evaluate our overall academic program and decide if we're worthy or not worthy, we're worthy. And so what that means is that I, I, we do kind of an opt-out thing, give parents the option to opt out because it is directory information that we're sharing. But we send a list and they get a certain GPA points, they're guaranteed admission, Central, Eastern, Whitworth, Evergreen, WSU.
Polls taste.
No, you have a separate one that we've been to in.
They lost their funding and I know that they were looking for.
Um, yeah, we're doing a digital transcript project. And then a program called Folia, so it's follow your student, which is like ten-year data out.
Okay. Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Don't be thinking of any questions afterwards or you see that anything just.
I'm going to bring Allison with me.
Yes.
So I couldn't do this without her, so I gotta have her up here with me. Cause she put together a lot of this data and stuff for me coming in as, you know, coming in and learning. So I'll apologize right off the bat. You know, I, I think some of them did a, a one-pager and I put together a slideshow. Not knowing exactly what you guys wanted or how you guys wanted it, but. And it may, you know, as I'm coming in, they maybe don't have all of the knowledge and, and things, you know, it's the year of learning with the, with the school and the group and. So some of the data is there, some of it's not, but we're expanding on it. We're adding for our state of the school on the fourteenth, where we've got discipline data added in. So we can talk to families about discipline as well. And then we'll go through a little bit of the things that we know we're working on and trying to take on going forward as well. So we'll go through that and then we're ready.
There was no particular format, so you're. It's up to you.
Don't, don't tell me that. All right. So topics covered. We're just going to go through really quick. We've got last year's SBA data. Our iReady data for last year, looking at this fall's iReady data, kind of showing you guys a starting point so that we can track that throughout the year. And when you guys come back in February, show you an update of where we're at and then, you know, to talk, you know, next year, so we can see the progression as we go forward. And then strategies for improvement. So kind of the things, and that'll be how we tie all of this together. So. This is SBA math last year for six, seven and eight altogether. And, you know, I know OSPI has changed their language a little bit with level two being foundational skills and. But, you know, traditionally we've looked at threes and fours and what that looks like. And you know, at twenty-seven percent across the board, obviously we want to be higher. And those are things that we're going to look at and build some leadership team members that will come in and help give us some ideas and work together. I know when I was meeting with Ms. Keely the other day, she was talking about a possible adoption and curriculum and those may be some things that, you know, we look at and we, you know, will have to pilot and progress going forward, I hope. So, yeah. And, you know, as far as the breakdowns on the next slide. Oh, this is the LA and then we're. Oh, this is math yet. Sorry. I thought I had the little one-pagers descriptions on there. Either they're nice, but we can go to the, the math one as well. So, yeah.
Lost.
No. But that's okay. I'm, so I mean, with the math that, you know, it's the twenty-seven percent. You know, we were at forty-two percent.
Yes.
Yeah, there we go. All right. So this breaks it down at least a little bit by grade level. You know, given us where we're at right now currently compared to the state average. You know, and we're not trying to be average, we're trying to be above average. And, you know, that's our goal is to be better than what the state is. And and so we will get there. It's just a matter of time and, you know, working together and, and building those systems and things and working with our, our leaders in those grade levels and those departments together. So we will get there. It's just, it, it might take us a little bit of time, but the goal is incremental progress over time. So every year we just want to be better. We want to be building toward those goals of getting up to sixty, seventy, eighty percent, you know. And that's ultimately where we will, we will be in the, in the end. It's a matter of if it's five years, you know, seven years before we get there. But if we're building progress toward that, that's where we want to be.
I appreciate you differentiating the, the change of the foundational skills to threes and fours. Cause it, it's misleading if we are comparing apples to apples.
I, it's, it's funny because I always kind of say, it's like they moved the goalposts for us to make it look better. And I go, no, we need to, we need to be honest about where we're at.
Because it's really about helping kids. That's what we want to do. We don't need to make it easier. We need to help them succeed.
And I would, I would love to take credit for differentiating that out for you, but Allison did that.
Thank you, Allison.
I just, I want to acknowledge, you know, she did, she put a lot of this together and really did a lot of work. And I know she's done a lot of work coming in as well. So. So continuing down, we get into the iReady data for last year. And this is overall math and it'll break down with six, seven, eight. But if you look at the, you know, this is broken down into the five tiers. So. The green is obviously about, you know, that's the above all students above level. If you look at diagnostic one, that's in the fall and then the other one in March. So giving you kind of a progression of where we're at, it's standard wise. Going forward and then it's broken down for you down below. It's, you know, sixth grade going from twenty-four percent in the fall to thirty-seven percent at grade level. Seventh grade, you know, seventeen to twenty-seven and, and so on. So we're seeing progress, right? And, and that's the goal is that incremental progress. However, you know, we want to see more progress and, you know, and we're going to work to get there. And, and that's what I'm excited about is like, I feel in my eight days being there and being in classrooms and working with staff, I know they're all committed. You know, I mean, they've jumped on with some things we'll talk about with the seventh period. And interventions and some things like that. So I, I can tell everybody's like, yeah, we want this for our kids. And it's, it's a pretty cool atmosphere to be in when everybody's feeling that and wanting, you know, wanting to grow for our kids. So. And then next is the ELA. So it's kind of same setup. With that, forty-four percent overall of being on grade level, you got your yellows that are, you know, they're approaching that grade level. And, you know, those are those tier two that kids that are in some of those interventions and hopefully will be coming to some of our after-school warrior time as we you know, add that in as well for an additional intervention for those kids. So those are kids that are really getting targeted in some additional interventions and trying to move that needle forward as well. So this is our fall data, just kind of showing. We kind of skipped ahead a little bit, I'm sorry. But showing where we're at after the fall iReady assessment and just giving you a sense of, you know, that green and that red, you know, those are the, those are the big ones to me. We always want to see that increase in the green. When we come to spring or winter or spring and a huge decrease in the red. We're trying to decrease the number of kids that are two or more grade levels behind and moving that needle forward. If we can move those kids to the yellow or the green and move those yellows up and, you know. So hopefully when we come back, even in February, you'll see a significant difference between February's or January's assessment and this one and the amount of green that you see of kids on or above level and the kids that are two or more grade levels below. So. I just put that out there because I want to bring that back in, in January and, and show and look at the comparisons.
Kind of highlights the summer learning loss that we hear about a lot if you're looking at the scores from.
Where we burn.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, if they're being tested on grade level standard in the fall. You know, and it's the beginning of the year, there's no what, you know, we don't expect a lot of them to be at grade level and, you know, at sixth grade level, when the most they've really done is fifth grade. So, you know, and that's part of it too, is they're, they're tested on that sixth, sixth grade level or seventh grade level, whatever grade they're in. And they might not be there yet, you know, and that's okay. They're not expected to be there in the fall. So we will see a difference just with the kids' growth by, by that time.
And we are seeing, just to kind of give some thoughts to elementary and the new curriculum that they were using, especially with magnetic, is that we were seeing some increases this year for those sixth graders coming in. So that bodes well as we move forward. So.
And then just seventh and eighth grade, you know, again, just showing you where we're at right now. More so this is for February's presentation, for your knowledge of February's presentation and coming back. But. And then if we go down, we're just going to kind of.
Give it to the last.
To the last. So, and I'm going to have Allison talk about a little bit of this, but. You know, just coming in, you know, being eight days, coming in a month into school. For me, you know, there's a lot of listening and learning and, you know, figuring out what things are working well. And, you know, I've spent last week I met with almost every staff member and just building relationships, getting to know them, you know, and spending some of those, that time asking, hey, what are we doing well? What are some things that you would like to see improve on? And really more focused on the positive because those are the things we want to go off of, right? And, and so taking that and, you know, staff was just really gracious with their time. You know, a lot of my conversations went over the fifteen minutes that we scheduled out, which was perfect, you know, because it was personal, just getting to know you, building that trust, you know, starting that piece of building the trust and the relationship. So we can work together. So one of the strategies going forward though, was a seventh period intervention and enrichment. And I'll let Allison talk a little bit about that because this is one of her.
Yeah, I always, I always said, this was the hill I was going to die on. And part of it was, is because being a lab teacher for a couple of years, we realized that we could only serve so many kiddos and we knew our numbers and we knew our data. And the kiddos who got in there, yeah, you could move a couple out, but you were not even reaching the percentage of kiddos who were not at standard. And so we knew you can't keep doing the same thing over and over again and expect something different. Staff were a little leery to start with the seven period day. They were like, no, we wanted seven periods so that we could, you know, just a little less. And it's like, well, so we just put the data in front of them. And that was what did it. And so now we have passionate staff, very passionate staff, as Sally found this morning, about really wanting this, this buy-in for the seven period day. And what it is, is any student, any student who is not at standard is an intervention first period. Any student who is at standard is in project-based learning. And those students are getting highly, I mean, good, high-quality instruction during that intervention time. Their, teachers are looking at iReady data, they're looking at small groups. We are looking at standards mastery for specific skills. And then those teachers are designing really high-quality instruction around those specific skills. So. My goal, my number, and I know we've kind of said ten percent when we're looking to increase, I want seventy percent of our kids at standard by the end of the year. I think it's, I think it's a real number that we can meet with giving the kids the intervention tools that we are doing. And so they are in ELA and math, if they test out of, say they're in ELA and they test out of it at semester, when they do their diagnostic, if they need math, they will go right into math intervention after that. If they test out and they are at grade level in both, then they'll go into project-based learning. Our goal is hopefully we'll have fewer intervention teachers at semester than more that are swapping over to project-based learning. But we just realized that all of our kids are important. All of our kids deserve the right to have access to those intervention strategies. And we weren't doing that. And so this was what we all felt was an important part we had to add.
So help me understand how this works in the morning. Every teacher then is teaching some sort of intervention.
So we have, yes. So what we have is we probably have about, I'm thinking one, two, three, four. We probably have six teachers who are doing project-based learning. So these are the teachers who have all of our students who are at standard and we have some great projects going on. The remainder of our teachers are doing a form of intervention. So we have history teachers who are doing reading intervention. We have science teachers who are doing math intervention. We have one of our special ed teachers who is stepping outside and she has some regular gen ed teacher, students with her and she's got a really low ones working. So it is, it meshes perfectly with the new MTSS standards because it gives us an opportunity to track exactly where students are, the work we're doing with them. And then we can slowly move them through that conduit of the intervention so that we're meeting that MTSS process. And so then they're moving and we've got resource teachers who then as we realize I've tried this, 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 it's not working, we can slide them into a different intervention group. So then we can try someone who is maybe more skilled at the lower levels and say, okay, let's try this, this and this. And then we're like, wow, okay, now we can really see where the gaps are. And so we're meeting the process, we're keeping the data. And it'll be, I think, way more beneficial than it has ever been in the past.
And you reevaluate at semester?
At semester.
Three questions and only big questions. Word of God. One, did you, which is, this is awesome, by the way. It's really, really cool. Very cool. I'm smiling. Did you increase the number to the six periods, then the numbers per class just got larger in there? That, that was just fine. I'm, I'm, you didn't have to cut like a whole subject, like less PE or something along those lines yet?
No, we did lose some staff, but we were able to, so little numbers. But the intervention groups, we've been able to luckily with the amount of teachers that we've used, everybody's doing one or the other. That most of our intervention groups are between thirteen and seventeen kids. So, which is, we all know that that's high quality when you're going to do interventions.
Second question, any concern about first period, doing it because of attendance?
Not yet. In fact, we have had, I mean, I'm curious to see our attendance numbers that, I mean, we were really surprised. I mean, we had days where we only had like nine kids absent. So. We have some kids coming in late, but because it's forty minutes, we can still get them in there and get some time. So it'll be interesting to look at the data as we, to see.
And I also liked that it's first period just because kids are fresh, you know, they're not, at the end of the day, they're not missing because of sports or they're just, you know, that apple lunch kind of.
Oh, hundred percent. I just, I, I said, I just was like curious because like if, I could also imagine if you're a really struggling student, you don't want to be in school. Although that gives you a whole other level of data too. It's like, no. And then last, what are you using for interventions? Like what tools are you using?
So we are using iReady. Part of the issue was, is we all wanted to swim in the same pool. So if our state-recognized piece that we're using for an assessment is the iReady diagnostic, then it made sense to utilize the small groups, the instruction. We are finding some hiccups along the way and we're in the process of working with that. But I guess the thing that made me most proud is that as I said, we have science teachers and history teachers and yes, they're frustrated with trying to figure out iReady, but they want to. And so that makes me proud because they know the data, they know they're our kids and I finally. And so that makes me proud because they know the data, they know they're our kids. And I finally feel like for the first time, everybody's invested in it. It's not just the ELA and math teachers.
Welcome to that tech too, that they don't have to actually know that yet.
Thank you. You don't want number four?
I didn't know. I'm good. I, I was okay. I just was, I was super excited. So I'm sorry.
I thought you were going number, for number four when you like downed it.
No, 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 no. I don't have four. I can come up with a four.
Um, and then we're getting ready to start our after-school warrior time as well, which will be another form of intervention. But obviously there's more, we're going to run into problems with kids going to sports and other things too. So not everybody will get that. Um, we're really, we just got our second teacher. So we have both of our teachers, uh, and Allison and I have talked a lot about how do we make this meaningful for kids and purposeful. Um, you know, so we're going to do a lot of work this year on, on figuring out how we make this a purposeful intervention. Um, you know, to continue the work that we're doing and try to continue to make progress and, and close that gap for our kids. So it's not a, we haven't gotten into, you know, defining what that looks like yet, but that is our goal is to make sure that it, you know, it's not just kids staying after and not necessarily having something to do, but like, how can we be purposeful with it? And I think we have a couple of teachers that are very excited about, you know, staying out there and working with our kids and, and taking part in that. So I think, you know, they're on board as well. And again, it's just exciting. Everybody is on board. Uh, when I first started, you know, going to those meetings with my teachers and the staff and one of them came up, you know, like, hey, what's going well? Well, I'm really excited about the seventh period. And at first I wasn't. And you know, I was like, I don't want to teach this, you know, I, I'm, this isn't my area math, but uh, then she says, but I saw the data. And I'm, I was instantly, I'm on board. That changed my whole perspective. Our kids need this. And so it's just that, you know, took that little bit of buy-in and now is very passionate about um, what they're doing. And, and so it's really cool to see. Um, when we talk about discipline and things that were changing, we got approached last week, um, from MASH, correct? I, I, I don't know what it stands for yet, uh, but they do some work in our buildings with some of our high-needs, uh, kids. And so they had offered, Ms. McCoy was, um, kind of the, the bridge for us and introducing us to Jade. All right. Um, and they had offered to help us implement some tier one, uh, PBIS throughout the building for free without a cost to the district. Um, and so they're putting together a survey. We talked about it with staff, so we're at a staff meeting today. And they're putting together a survey, you know, we're not trying to overwhelm staff and teachers with new things. And that's really important to me as, you know, we're trying to do a, a lot of things right now and we don't want to overwhelm everybody with a whole bunch of stuff. So really trying to keep it initially just focused on what are one or two tier, you know, tier one strategies that we can bring out. That Allison and I can help lead, you know, maybe not necessarily put it on teacher's plate, but how can we make things happening in the school better for all of our teachers and all of our kids. Um, so that survey, we saw the draft of it today. That'll go out to staff and it's really, it'll be five minutes of us for them to fill out, which we'd asked them to do just so we know people will fill it out. Uh, so I'm excited about that and seeing how we can, you know, asking for teachers like, where do you feel is the best place for us to start? Um, so we'll get that feedback hopefully soon and get that process started as well. And then attendance focus, uh, we really want to work on attendance as well. We have our, one of the things that we got scheduled is we got our first attendance meetings tomorrow morning. So building an attendance team, getting that process going. Um, so that we can start talking about kids, talking about strategies to incentivize attendance. I'm not about bribing kids to be there. Um, you know, if they're there, they're learning and that, and that's the ultimate goal, right? So uh, talk about strategies for how to increase attendance, but having that team that's going to meet every other week, talking about kids, talking about attendance, um, setting goals and plans in place for that. So and, and then really trying to empower our staff to, I mean, we've got people that are passionate about our kids that love being there, love our kids, love what they're doing. Um, and so empowering them to take on some of those leadership roles and, and help us, you know, help guide our, our work in what we do. So, and then last thing is, and I'll see if you want to have anything, but you know, really celebrating successes, um, you know, and, and one, my old mentor when I was a teacher and he was a principal and one of my favorite people that I ever worked with or for, um, used to always say, celebrate what you want to see more of. And so like kind of carrying that over into what we, what we do and, you know, finding those, maybe their little successes for certain kids or certain, you know, our math scores go up or, you know, whatever, and finding those and just continuing to build on those and finding ways to celebrate them in a meaningful way that, you know, shows that that's what we want to see more of. So. Anything to add?
Nope. Okay.
All right.
Now, as you say, um, as, as we're listening to this and as you start to find those, whether there are needing support, that we, we, we're pretty good at finding those support sources. If it's a summer slump going on, then we, we have resources for that. If it's that those transitions, we talked about cabinet the other day. We'll, we'll find resources, uh, to make sure we address those. So don't, for all of us, don't, don't stop thinking about what is the, what's the problem to solve, right? And then what resources need to, to be employed in order for that to solve. So, um, yeah, so keep, let's keep talking because we'll find what is needed.
No, I'm, I'm really excited to be here. Everybody has been fantastic and I, I do feel like staff is just, they are ready to move forward and try and get. So it's a pretty exciting time.
Very exciting.
Thank you. There was the big step in here also. All right, um, I'm not going to go through the big sifts because all of the information on the big sift goes on the one pager. Um, just the one thing you know about the, the big sift is sections four and five are not complete because those are ones we add to.
So can I just add that when you're in, in our cabinet meeting, we, we talked about like what should tonight look like and I was, we were trying to communicate with people as I was hoping for. The one thing we realized is that of course you're each assigned to a building. And we want to make sure that, um, if, if the questions you have, when you feel free, we'll make sure we, um, you know, set up a meeting for you to, to make sure, like, if you want to drill down and go through the OSI, the data and whatnot, then we'll make sure that you get what you need as a support. Uh, but tonight we're going to stick to the one page.
Yeah. Um, before I even get into this, uh, I'm a true to form for celebration. So, I mean, my school is on the school of improvement, but based on our, um, achievement data, if it all ended today, we would have worked ourselves up of every improvement area other than special education. So. Those to, uh, to my staff for all their hard work. And I know Jason and I have a plan for sped and we're, we're, we're getting there. So we're gonna, we're going to get there hopefully by the end of the year and then be off of OSI. That's the goal. So, um, and so since we're not off, uh, my goals are really similar to last year and that's just ten percent going up in ELA, ten percent in math. Um, and so relative to that data, um, and relative to our iReady data, Eatonville Elementary had the highest growth in the district. Um, so I'm also proud about that as well. So when we look at ELA, um, I attribute a lot of that hard work, uh, A to magnetic and everyone buying into magnetic. I think part of that was Sally running a really thoughtful process for adopting that curriculum. And then at the beginning of the year, training staff, training our classified staff that were running the interventions, like phonics for reading, going into that. Um, so everyone kind of had a common path. And so, um, as you see the increases on the left for, um, iReady, those are just the differences from the fall to the spring, obviously since the fall is they, they're tested on grade level standards and they don't know them, you're always going to see growth, but, um, really happy with the percentages and the amount of growth. Um, the big kudos and, and I agree, uh, wholeheartedly relative to like, um, for me with the foundational skills, a, a two's not good enough. Um, and so threes and fours are how we're going to measure our success because if a student leaves a grade at a three, they are going to be more successful in the following grade when that content and curriculum is harder. Um, if they're at a two, then it's going to be a struggle for them. So, um, we ended up at, uh, fifty-three percent, when you look at the overall, that's the threes and fours. And so that relative to the state, the state average was at fifty point nine percent. So we're higher than the state with threes and fours in addition to the seventy-eight percent, which is including the twos. So either way you measure it, we're higher than the state average for Eatonville or ELA. So happy about that. Um, and then relative to our scores from twenty-three, twenty-four, we went up twelve points. Um, in the threes and fours category and we went up eleven points if you add in the twos. So we, we had a lot of great growth for us. Um, the one grade level that we didn't quite get to the state average was third grade. Um, and then, uh, but every other grade level, we, we went up significantly and we were above the state average. So I was super excited about that. Um, relative to the previous year, so for twenty-three, twenty-four, third grade, we were at forty-five. So we just stayed static. Um, fourth grade, we were at forty-four point four. So we went up to sixty-one from forty-four point four. And then, um, this was the significant jump with our fifth grade teachers. We were at thirty-five point two percent meeting standard in twenty-three, twenty-four, and we went up to fifty-seven percent. So, uh, some great, uh, growth there. And so then I also attribute that to our focus. When you go down to a stretch growth and typical growth priority is, our goal is stretch growth, stretch growth, stretch growth, so that we're closing gaps. Um, I'll talk about that a little bit more when I compare our fall data. Um, and so with all of this great ELA stuff, now we get to math. Um, so, um, our goal again is ten percent. Um, we did not, uh, see the growth that we wanted relative to, uh, full of state average and, uh, I mean, we met the state average for fifth grade. We were just one percent below in fourth grade. And then we got some work to do in third grade. So, um, so that's our focus this year. Uh, one strategy that will be our primary focus is, uh, school-wide, we're going to work on math fluency and math facts. So, um, we, Sally and I have worked through, uh, with iReady, uh, we're going to be, we got a free pilot of, um, uh, it's called a fluency flight, which is for grades two through three. And it's a, it's a math fluency program that we've already started and the whole district is going to have access to that. Um, for grades two through five. And so, um, we're working on that. Um, we're, because we're in this kind of quasi tweener year of adopting curriculum. So we're trying to kind of get to skills and focus on that relative to our growth. Um, we're also adding in last year during our tutoring, tutoring program, we focused mainly on ELA. We're adding math this year uh, into that. Uh, so that we can hopefully see some more gains with our tutoring students after school as well. Um, and so like our stretch growth, we only had twenty-six percent of our students meeting the stretch growth goals and then fifty-eight for typical. So we just, we're not seeing the growth in math that we were seeing in, uh,
And we haven't had the same quality of curriculum. Like we improved the curriculum for ELA.
Yeah.
We need to improve it for math.
Yes. And I, and I'm hoping with kind of that and having, um, you know, a good thoughtful process to adopt that curriculum, then we'll have good buy-in from our teachers. And then we have some thoughtful training that, you know, if, if we we mimic the steps that I feel like Sally did with magnetic, I feel like we're going to have success. Um, then moving on to our goal three, and so goal three for me, uh, is kind of replacing attendance. And so like Amy mentioned, like attendance is hard. And that's kind of a really big umbrella, but for, for elementary, we're, students are so much at the mercy of their parents to get to school. And then, uh, so that's one portion of our attendance that's hard. And then so for example, we set a percentage goal, I think it was ninety percent attendance, but then we had a massive flu pandemic that ripped through our school in January and February and dropped our attendance rates in those two months to sixty-eight and seventy percent. So our goal shot. Um, so rather than focus on something that in a lot of ways is outside of our control, um, I focused on, um, decreasing our discipline data on verbal and physical aggression with the mindset of if we're creating an environment where kids feel safe and kids want to be there, that they're going to want to come to school and they're going to be pressuring their parents to get them to school. So that's the mindset of, um, trying to do this and most of these things occur at recess. So, um, so just trying to do some things relative to behavior. So this is our, uh, major infraction data, um, for last year, and then our minor infraction data is on the next chart. And so basically the areas of like assault and then fighting and threat of violence are the two primary areas that we're focusing on. Um, and so, so a couple of examples, I know our parent educators and research, recess duties got trained in reimagining recess, which is, uh, more like PBIS focused for recess. Um, uh, Jay approved us to kind of embed some cell into our tutoring uh, program. So I know that, uh, Ms. McElrath's going to be working on a peer, uh, uh, peer mediation program using our leadership students. And they're going to meet once a week during that tutoring time. So that we're going to have the ability to use it and just to kind of mediate out conflict and hopefully we're going to reduce some conflict that way. Um, and then the other two days will be other support interventions for students with, um, social emotional needs. So we're hoping that by kind of, you know, focusing on what we can control and create a positive student culture, that that's going to impact attendance. So, um, so those are our goals for our SIP plan. And then the, the page that I just handed out to you was the comparison of our fall data. And, um, and so that's for reading and for math. And so it's the overall two grades and it's double-sided. And then it shows a grade level comparison. And so for me as a principal, looking at iReady um, in the fall, to be very honest, I don't really care about green. Because that's testing them on information that they're not supposed to know yet. So I mainly focus on the red. And so the, the nice thing for me, looking at the grade levels and passing them on is that we're seeing less red, which means the kids are more prepared moving to the next grade level. And so there are less three levels behind, so we can move more students to the yellow and to the green by the end. If we continually are focusing on reducing the red. And so, and fourth grade's the only grade level this year that I think that that's going to be a focus on how we're going to intervene with our fourth grade students because, um, that was the one area that our, uh, high-risk students increased. Uh, so that's going to be one area we'll have to look at. But I'm really happy that our kids are rolling over to the next grade level more prepared. And that's just very hard work that our, our teachers are telling me. So that's all I got.
Okay. Um, looking at, um, our one pager for Warehouser, I was following the same, uh, format that Nick had and just, so just to, I guess, kind of simplify it and it may get a great model, but it's easy to follow. I thought that that's as well. So it, looking at our data, well, we've got the three goals and my, my three as well. So it, looking at our data, well, we've got the three goals. And my, my three goals again are based on a goal for reading, a goal for math, and then attendance again. Um, I would consider doing, um, uh, my third goal, uh, which is around attendance. I considered doing that. I, I liked what Nick had with, um, behavior management, um, and, and discipline. Uh, I didn't have the same data that he had. I have re- great recess data, but I didn't have building that. So we have implemented a, um, behavior, I guess, a behavior team this year. So we've got teachers who actually, they were asked personally by our social worker if they would be part of this team. And they are volunteering their time to be part of that team and to look at data. And if it will need to focus in on behaviors because at, at different times of the year, it gets extreme and other times it's not so bad. But we wanna be ready for those times we're doing this, uh, to get ready for them. So that's looking forward to next year. Uh, but anyway, looking at my goals for this year, we were, I already tweaked number one, um, looking at students at levels one, two, and three will increase their reading scores. Um, and I reduced that to just students at levels one and two, cause three, that's, you know, they're meeting standard. That's, that's great. So I don't expect a three to go to a fourth grade if they do, but, um, ones and twos are where we're gonna focus our time and our efforts. So, uh, with that, you can see that the data is showing that for, that last year, at the beginning of the year, we had, um, two hundred and thirteen students, sorry, at the end of the year, we had two hundred and thirteen students in green, both green overall. And we started at sixty-nine. So that growth, I thought was really great. And the, using iReady, the buy-in was, um, it was, I have to say, you know, telling, having teachers say that they had to build in forty-five minutes for reading, forty-five minutes for math each week all year long. Um, it was, it was hard to get teacher buy-in, but they, they got to see the results of that. And so iReady has been a real, uh, a real great program for us to be implementing to fill some of those, those holes and provide those supports that are, that students are needing academically. Um, then first building in magnetic, that was, um, you know, getting writ, getting that all implemented was a little bit rocky at the beginning, but teachers are in their stride and I think we'll see better growth even this year. Um, our Reds also went, went down. We went from eighty-four students at the beginning of the year to thirty-seven students at the end of the year. So liking that data. And then if you look at our SBA, um, scores again, um, you know, I agree with keeping the foundational skills, you know, yeah, it's there, using our twos, threes, and fours. But if, if you don't know what that score means and you're looking at the state and you're comparing it to our overall score of forty-nine point seven percent, you know, it's a little bit, um, you, it's deceiving, I think, if you don't understand what those different scores are. But building that in, we did beat the state average um, overall for those and in, in, uh, third and fourth grade. Uh, sorry, third and fifth grade, we beat the state average there too. So in reading. And then are those, then you can see our reading scores for iReady. Um, K one, I have the biggest jumps in iReady scores from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And, um, that's, to me, that's is just so important to see because it's those early learners that need to have that, that readiness for the next level. And I think that using magnetic, using iReady is, is helping teachers, helps students reach those goals. On goal two, math, um, yeah, we do have some areas to work on in math. Uh, but our scores showed from the beginning of the year to the end of the year in iReady that we, um, you know, made some great gains. Uh, our SBA scores, we do have some work still to do. I think that, um, being able to look at the new math, uh, curriculums and going through that process again, like, um, Sally thoughtfully led us through with the readings. We'll do that with math this year and, and hopefully get something in place that will help our students raise their scores in math as well. Um, our goal for, for this year for, um, my third one for attendance, we met our goal last year. We beat our goal last year. Our goal was to be at, um, ninety percent and we were at ninety-one point five four percent. So pretty, it's great, pretty intentional with, um, lots of incentives, lots of, um, for lack of a better term, bribery. Just helping kids, uh, know that it's important to be at school. So, uh, we'll jump that up to ninety-three percent, see if we can get there. We did have some months, you can see there that it, it did lower a little bit, but we, we never got below, um, an eighty-nine percent for attendance of that. That was good, even during some of those winter months. Um, one of my goals that I'm working on, uh, with Jay, uh, we were talking about, uh, that one of the, well, one of the strategic goals here is the preparation for life. So, um, my goal this year is to work on, um, community, community connections. And so Jay and I were talking about today with the net, that, uh, one of the things that we wanna do this year is, uh, is a, what do I wanna be when I grow up? Fair, kind of like a career fair, but kids will get to make connections with different people in their different jobs and, and just start that thinking about what they might wanna do when they grow up, which will lead to middle school and high school and, and the thinking that they do there. Um, and then we also talked about possibly even seeing what Pierce County Skills Center looks like and, and taking, uh, our fifth graders there. So they could see what that's like and what those, what the offerings are. So they can start thinking ahead to that.
Yeah, I mean, and offerings, you know, Pierce County Skills Center, Amy and I have talked about that a few times, but also others like have a two-year college there and have a four-year college there, two-year private, two-year public, um, you know, Grand Canyon University. So that they start to see early on what the possibilities are and they just don't think that's nebulous or like forever before I have to think about that. We want to make sure by telling the middle school, high school, if they're already starting to think about, you know, the things I'd like, people enjoy more, more programs. I know, I'm inside, outside, you know, what, what, what really jazzed and that I really wanna do. So, um, so we're working on that. Again, as I said before, we'll find resources, uh, we'll get real creative and make sure we make sales happen. Cause that, that same thing can go, you know, for others, you know, as well.
Yeah, we talked about that with maybe the fifth graders from the other two schools as well, that, that would be a good um, and lastly, the, the foundation, the foundation's tutoring money that, um, we've gotten has been a godsend. I have to say, we've got our, our groups are starting tomorrow, uh, their first tutoring day. Um, and we've got five people who are ready to roll and it's, we've got parents who have bought into it and are ready, ready to bring their kids and pick them up later off, later than they would if they had to ride the bus or pick them up at two-thirty. So, yep, so there, we're getting that going tomorrow. And one thing I was thinking when I was listening was, um, the money that was given for the summer program. I didn't think to look back at the data for the students who went to the summer program to see what their iReady data looked like for this fall, to see if that summer slump maybe lessened.
Would be, I know that, um, a person who gives us that money would love to see that. That would be really helpful.
We actually have it.
Morgan's a go-getter.
So we will get that back to the board, but also it'd be interesting.
Okay, so, any questions?
Okay, last one, I'll try to hurry. So, um, so we have, um, four goals here. And the reason there's a fourth goal is because I actually, um, sent out our school compact. As a title one school, we have to do a school, the home parent compact. Um, and I sent that out to my staff and our TK teacher, she approached me and she said, you know, this is really great. However, TK is not reflected anywhere in this. And it would be awesome if TK could be part of the school improvement plan. I said, absolutely. Um, and so she actually, I'll give credit to our TK teacher, Mrs. Cravens. Um, she's done a phenomenal job in our TK classroom this year. And so she actually drafted that fourth goal there and she would like it to be part of the walk kids that she's already doing anyway. And I thought, oh, that's a great tie in to TK. Um, so that's why there's this new fourth goal there. Um, but outside of that, um, focusing on math and reading, both goals, just trying to take where students are at and increasing them up by a level. Um, and then outside of that, similar to Warehouser with attendance. Um, that's been our big sticking point. Last year, we actually did a really great job with our attendance. But, um, this year, uh, this has been the best start to any school year. However, there's been more sickness at the start of any school year that I've been in it for fifteen years. And this has by far been the worst for sickness this early on. Um, but outside of that, hopefully we can regain some healthy staff and students and not have so many absences. Um, and a lot of it kind of tied together. So I'll just do a few generic, um, highlights for everybody. Um, so we started the year off with an expectations expedition where we really wanted to hit the ground running with setting behavior expectations schoolwide. So we took all classes on an expedition around the school and staff that isn't assigned to a grade level had, um, a positions. For example, um, Daniel Adams, our media specialist, he ran, um, a behavior expectation station around how to enter the front door politely. And what does that look like when you need to enter and you're using the keyless badge system instead of pounding on the door, yanking it open? How do you, um, ring the buzzer politely or scan the badge? So, um, when we all took a station around the school and students walked with their teacher, we really set the groundwork for here's how you behave in the school, here's how you act as a reindeer. And I think that really prevented a lot of um, behavioral issues. So the teachers could then get going right away with academics. So we'll continue to do that each year cause we all felt like that was a strong start to the year. Um, we were able to begin our What I Need groups, which is our, um, admin model for interventions. So students, um, began those the last week of September. And we also started our tutoring programs last week of September. We really hit the ground running with iReady testing all of our students, K eight, where I ready tested. And we, um, were able to get those groups up and going. Um, and it's really all hands-on deck. Even our PE teacher has like a twenty-minute window where she's doing, um, math interventions. Um, so we're really trying to utilize every key player we can to meet as many, um, needs as we can. Um, for the first time this year, we are offering, uh, four days a week of math intervention outside of a Wednesday and then, um, five days a week of reading intervention. And, um, we're really hopeful that with the extra monitoring that we're doing, we've got all of our MTSS meetings planned for the year. We have a really strong lead with our MTSS. Um, she's really great about looking at data, giving, um, paras, the curriculum they need, switching it up if we have a sub come in and teaching that sub how to use that curriculum on the fly in the morning. We send her right down to uh, Mrs. Heitz's room. And she's so nice about just showing subs how to use these materials because that's hard when you're walking in at seven in the morning and you don't know what, what you're doing with all these intervention groups. Um, and so we're hopeful that, um, all of this will really help our scores, um, to continue to increase. And outside of that, to increase our attendance. Um, we've got three great staff members who, with the budget cuts, we weren't able to offer them the stipends to lead their after-school clubs. But they said, no, we, we wanna volunteer and, and offer these clubs. And I think that will help with our attendance too, getting students to do these awesome clubs. We're able to offer sewing, sculpture-making, dance, and drama after school, all because of the kindness of staff's hearts. So um, I think all of those things will just make kids want to come to school. And, um, of course, our nature-based program, we're really fortunate, um, that that is really doing well. We have great new, uh, curriculum. Um, thanks to Sally helping us get this going, a supplemental curriculum for our environmental ed focus with our nature-based curriculum. Teachers have really jumped into that. We have our second training on, on those manuals, um, October twenty-second. And so we're, the teachers have really just dove into that and, um, have been making that really work well for us. Um, and then taking a, a look here at our reading overall, um, you can kind of see the graphical charts are a little hard to to look at there. So just kind of an overall of iReady last year where we entered the year at for reading, a hundred fourteen out of a hundred seventy-nine students in K through eight moved at least one level from fall to spring or they stayed in the green. And so we're pretty proud of that growth. Our SBA does need some work and we're, we're well aware of that. And one of the things that I'm grateful for this year that we can kind of get ahead of is pre-planning when the interims will be. And it's a district-wide, thanks to Sally's assessment calendar, we have it really counted out as to when we're gonna do the interims. And I think that will help instead of, last year, we were seeing the date of testing coming up and we were like, okay, kind of how you cram for a test last minute and throw the interims at the kids last minute. And we really found that wasn't effective. So we're embedding them in earlier on and I think that will really help. Um, and then as far as our math goes, our math overall, a hundred students out of a hundred and seventy-nine um, either stayed in the green or they moved up a full level. And that's fifty-six percent of this goal. And I should have mentioned the, the reading was sixty-four percent of this goal. Um, and then with our attendance data, um, last year, we did meet our goal. So we increased our goal um, to ninety-five percent. So we're really hopeful that with all the great things that we're offering, kids, they'll wanna be there. Um, one of our struggles is tardies. And I've been working with Bonnie, we've gotten all the buses there on time. Now we had some issues with the bridge closure at the beginning of the year. So that didn't help us. Um, but now we're just focusing in on tall parents who students are parent drop-off, but they're just, they're getting there later. Um, and our, we have a new social worker this year and she's been really gung ho about getting, um, those phone calls made. And she's, um, already started to look at the panorama data that's come in. Um, we just started doing those surveys. And we'll be starting up social emotional groups. And she and I met with Sally earlier this week to add a component um, to our after-school tutoring program to offer social emotional learning groups. And I think that will be a really nice addition to the robust tutoring program that we already have. And then the last thing on your one pager is just the attendance data. This was just a snapshot that I pulled, um, when I created this, um, from September twenty-third. And you can just kind of see that bar graph just shows a bulk, almost all of the absences were due to illness. Already, but hopefully once we get over this, um, sickness, I'm on the tail end of it. So hopefully it'll be the last one until the January, February, um, things that hit. Um, and then goal four, like I mentioned, um, her goal is that eighty-five percent of the TK students will demonstrate growth. And at least four out of the six walk kids, um, domains that she's assessing. And that's all I got for you.
Thank you. Good job on your attendance rate, by the way. Wow, that was a lot of good stuff. I'm really, we were just at a candidate's forum for the Community Center. And there were like thirty-five people there. And I just thought, this is the meeting they need to be at. This is where they need to be hearing the good work that's happening. So I hope they go back onto YouTube and they, uh, access all of this great information or reach out to each of you individually because there is good, hard, important work happening. And I know that we think we're doing our best to get this out, but we can never communicate too much. So we just need to keep sharing on that. So thank you for coming and making us aware. Uh, I just focusing on our goals, uh, I saw multiple measures of data here presented tonight. And I appreciate that very much. That means a lot to us. It helps educate us, um, and also gives us, I think, all a clear picture. Like Allison, when you said, this Allison over here, when you said your staff had buy-in because they saw the data, that makes a difference. And so, uh, our community will do the same thing, I believe. All right, we're gonna go into superintendent comments.
Thank you. Well, couldn't be more proud of you. Really appreciate all the work that you're doing to make sure our students, um, you know, learn at the very best possible that they can. And also if they have really good experience, those two measures are really important and and obviously they lead right into preparation for life and success later on. And, um, so like I want to let everyone know that one of the things that we're really working hard on too, uh, as we discussed this in our cabinet meeting that, um, the, the amount of good, the number of the things that are going well, um, are just so far greater than the things that are challenges. Now, it doesn't mean, as, as I say, as we said, the biggest river in the world is for improvement. And we know that that will never change. And so we were never, we're never giving up and and we'll always continue to. One of the things we're working on is, is to get the word out, just like we did tonight, uh, to our, to our community, to each other, um, between schools, uh, to you as a board and to others, um, to, to do a lot more bragging, um, and to do that in a humble way, but to also just make sure that everyone knows, you know, that we are making, uh, growth, you know, we, we just came from the candidates forum, you know, and went on. And one of the things that just really continues to occur to me is, is, uh, you know, Allison does a really great job, uh, you know, sharing out. We have our individually, we do well as a school, but we still have a lot of people who are saying, we want more transparency. Um, we, we, um, we wanna make sure that our, that our, that our test scores are going up and those things. And I'm like, they are. Um, we, we, um, we want to make sure that our, that our, that our test scores are going up and those things, and I'm like, they are. And we are, you know, and, and things, but, um, the old saying is, you know, uh, silence is golden, but that's not true, tool communicates golden. You can't get enough communication, we can't continue to brag enough about the work that we're doing, and, and I mean, the way we do it is we brag about our kids. That's how you do the brag, because everybody loves to hear brags about kids and the work that's being done, and we kind of stay in shadows. Uh, because we don't really accept that, that, you know, as our successes, but we certainly do as for our kids. And we want to continue to do that, so we're going to do not more bragging about our kids this year and, and continue to, um, reach for that transparency, um, which I believe we're really doing well, which continue to in that area, but communicate that. So even the things that we're doing well, we just need to communicate those things, and so we'll keep doing that. So, yeah, um, just a couple of, of things that are important, um. It's just so interesting how you just never know who's in the community, so we're over at the maintenance department, we're, we're, we're actually uh, trying to get resources for kids, the community and stuff like that, and the gentleman rolls up on his, on his tricycle Harley, and and he says, uh, says, what's going on here? It's like, well, look at the school district, we're always trying to make sure our kids have everything they need to be successful. It's like, uh, how about you, who are you and everything, he's like, I just retired from the maritime, uh, in a maritime career and and, uh, I haven't gotten this to you yet, but, because it just happened, and, uh, we, and I'd like, that, that would be great, you know, we have career day, we have, you know, and we just got through talking about when I grow up day and things like that, and and of course, we're trying to get preparation for life, you know, doing what we need to now so that we also connect to the life thereafter. And so, um, we talked for a few minutes, and then pretty soon he came rolling back up on his, on his Harley again. And he says, okay, so I can get your kids as many jobs, I can get all your kids' jobs if they want to, and that was what I did, and and I, I retired, and I don't, I want to stay connected, so I want to be really involved. And so he left us with, you know, some comforts and things, and he's like, so nine months training program, and at the end of the night, they're going to make a million money, this is how much I was making, and when I, when I finished, and it's a really rewarding career, and so, yep, you just let me know and I'll be there, and I feel like that's the way we are in this community, whether it's the Joe Hart Ed, you know, it's just support program, or whether it's creating, you know, community foundation or whatever it is, uh, there's, and then you as board members, and you know that you're, care about caring what's best for kids, you know, there are no agendas here except for kids, kids are on our agenda, and we're collective on that. And, and, uh, so, um, this is just one more example of how we're going to really work hard to make sure that we do a, we, we reach out and, and match those needs and resources, the needs of which are, you know, making sure our kids are successful, you know, here and beyond, and so we'll keep, keep doing those sorts of things. The other thing I just wanted to mention, one night, and so appreciate you being here, I know you've gotten every morning in the morning. But, uh, I know you always ask me to do a little bit of an update as far as where our other stadium is going on there. And so, um, things continue to roll forth, we just, um, we, uh, I, I was just out there yesterday with Brandon, we may have seen on the Facebook post, but basically um, taking a picture up and down, the curving is almost complete. And, um, and we do have our catch bases and basins in. And those are preventing the pleasure, you know, and then the piping will start to go in, and then we'll go back up fifteen inches, that's what it'll be. Or if I'll, I'll send in, the, the, the curving right now looks kind of funny, it's like sticking up this height, like that's, that's a trip hazard. Well, it won't be, because that will be leveled by the time we find again this really, really great field that will be safe, you know, that will definitely pass all right, like just like um, but the next step, uh, we, we had out, um, yesterday morning, our stadium people. So that's the first, you know, you watch the stadiums go down in a day, and now we, and, and thank you again. Uh, and now we're, we had our, our folks out, and we're already talking about the cranes and, you know, what we'll need to, what we'll need to shut down in order to make that happen, and where's the lay-down, and where, when will it get there, and how will that be? And so that was really great to know that our general contractor also has worked already on several stadiums with, uh, um, with our stadium provider and, uh, manager. So, so that's, that's our, that's also the work, so now you'll see, uh, excavation's done completely now. We're just starting on the drainage system, that'll continue, and then eventually we'll get to the field. We, we are still on track, the weather has been wonderful for helping us to work forward, but, um, the plan is still that by the end of December, um, unless, you know, weather permitting, that we should have the stadium up. That we should have the track, the track done, all except for either, it depends on whether, but, uh, perhaps just the last rubberized coating is all. If it's something worse because of weather, then it would be, we'd have to put two layers on in the spring. But the idea is still by the end of December, we're still hoping to have that all operational, um, even, even the track you could get on, you just start to have rubberized coating, yeah. And now it should be in February or March, so that we can have a dedication in the next spring. And then, uh, we're already busy talking to others who have stadiums with our official turf where you can do twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, like how they make sure that their community gets the most use out of that, we want some, lots beyond sports, so we want people to have all kinds of things there, in the stadium. And, uh, so we're just gonna, we're, we're trying to get ahead of that game too. Um, so that's kind of like a stated report of where we're at, we'll just continue to make sure we work well, we'll work well with the town. Make sure we got all those permits ready, and have all the planes ready, and, and, uh, we should by, by, um, next of our state, we should have flagpole, the goposts, scoreboard, uh, restrooms. Um, obviously stadium, track, and field, play clocks at the ends, and should just be a, and also lighting that goes to tennis courts, so we can make sure that this will just stay the same, so. Um, any questions on the stadium or that, we'll just continue to provide that report every two weeks, um, as, as it moves forward. So I guess just, uh, to end, um, appreciate to begin the work that you're doing as principals, as leaders. Appreciate the work that's been done, the district office wants to support you, because that's why we exist, we only exist for you. You certainly don't exist for us, we exist for you, and so we need to make sure that we continue to, uh, give you what you need to be the most successful that you can be, and, uh, I can appreciate the board and for the support that you lend me, that you lend us as leadership, that you lend students and the community, and, uh, as we brought it, so the best is yet to come, we're just getting it started.
Uh, no, just thank you guys, appreciated, um, the data and information, um, in my role in state, my my, my biggest concern right now is, well, not concern, but the world I'm involved in with AI and all of that right now is, you know, help, whatever you need help with, and getting the focus from product-based assessment to process-based assessment. Um, especially in secondary, um, so I appreciate all the work you guys are doing, and I love the direction we're in, it's incredible, and I support you guys one, one hundred and ten percent. And my kids loved it here.
Uh, thank you guys so much, it was a late night, and just for being here, um, I was really excited to hear, um, the data, the, and, and the buy-in of the teachers, the, um, the hearts that they have, and, um, uh, I'm really grateful that, um, to hear that Mash has gotten involved and, um, a part of this, that's a, a tool that you know, I, I was just really excited to see it come to fruition, and then I also know that they, and I don't know if they have yet, um, will also work with family.
We already are doing that, yes.
Yeah, so that's just such an awesome tool, just to bring everything together, the best, it's really good for, and, and even that, um. Yeah, uh, it, it, being at the meeting we were at earlier, uh, not to drag out too long, but, um, you know, one of the things on the town, the town council, what they were talking about, which is the issue with the water, which, you know, that we, we have a water issue in our town, and so that brought me to our field, track and field, and just that, you know, uh, again. You know, we'll be helping with that situation, so, um, it, it just brings me to a whole village that, you know, it takes a village, it's not just town council, it's not just school board, it's, it's a village, we're all together. Um, and, and I do wish that every one of them could come here and watch one of these, or, or if maybe we can post out the board meetings better, to maybe we post them, so people can see it and see the data, because, you know, most parents are, probably aren't checking, I'm just, I'm just listening, it's an assumption, so we put it out there for them to hear, and because I, I do feel that people don't know, they might see numbers, but they're not paying attention to the growth. And they're not seeing what we see, that, you know, teachers are making a solid effort, and, and our kids are growing. Uh, it, it's not the doom and gloom, but, you know, they might, might see we're, we're on a perfect plan, and it takes time, it's not overnight, so thank you.
Yes, I want to thank you for your presentations, and one of the things when I was looking at the percentages of different things before tonight, um, attendance was one of the things that was just on my mind and on my heart, because if they're not there, they can't learn, so I appreciate that, everything that's being done to get kids there, and, you know, I, I drove through the vessel school district and happened to unfortunately get into a elementary school at the time school was getting out. I was appalled, shocked at the amount of parents picking up kids at two o'clock in the afternoon, I was just like, oh my gosh. You know, and so I know that's a, a major problem, because parents sometimes they're not on time, or, you know, to get their kids to school, and it's not the kids' fault, you know, and stuff, and so I really appreciate, you know, um, the information that you gave tonight, and, and that was, I could say of everything, I knew you'd be working on all of the you know, the reading and the math and all of that, but the attendance, um, was something that was really kind of you know, I was interested in, and I really appreciate what you're doing there, and the way that your, uh, staff is buying into what, to, you know, doing things a little differently, you know, and, um, and I, I firmly believe with all my heart, mind, and soul, that it's going to make a tremendous difference, and so thank you.
It's awesome. Um, I echo the gratitude, and when the meeting we just came from, our community had the opportunity to ask some questions, and right before we left, the question was, um, about transparency and, and what would a, a board, new board member do to increase transparency? I think this is one step, your state of the school is going to be another great opportunity for us to say, look, we are working towards that goal of being transparent. Um, and then communicating out when we are, our board calendar is going to be another way, if we can get that linked onto our website. Then families and community members can see, these are the reports that we'll be having, and that's how it will happen. Um, so thank you for your part, and also in our board calendar, you guys are here, and I need to thank you, because we sent that by you, and that's so great, we're so grateful to have that, thank you for your input. Um, the last, since our last meeting, we've met with Representative Barkus. Um, Jay and I, and he is on board to helping us with, uh, trying to secure some additional funding in regionalization. Also, he has some really innovative ideas on how we might be able to get some additional funding in other ways, um. I was really grateful, I was really grateful to hear his thoughts, he's, um, he is a minority leader on transportation, and and so he had some ideas on how we might be able to get some additional transportation funds, which I thought was brilliant. And I told him I would not cease to nag him now that I know the facts on his mind, so after that, um, also met with Commissioner Up the Grow from Department of Natural Resources additionally, and, um, always grateful for his willingness to take our input and, uh, for us to be able to continue to remind him, uh, how important that industry is to our community in more ways than one. Just a reminder that, uh, we have our student representative interviews coming up on Friday. If you can be here, we need to know, we need to advertise that we're going to have more than three of us, so communicate with Cassie. Also, um, we will, the board will be, anyone who's available will be serving at the state of the, serving a meal to our community at the state of the school, the middle school, so looking forward to that, if you can be there, that would be wonderful, love to have extra hands. Um, also, a really cool opportunity we have coming up, we don't have the date yet, but keep it on our forefront of our minds, is the House Education Committee. Um, and those are all the people who really care about education, will be coming to visit the farm, have they coordinated a date with you yet?
They're coming, uh, is it the twenty-fourth, this is Friday, is that twenty?
Of October.
Yeah, and it's actually a non-student day, which, because of for conferences, but it actually works out a little bit great, because Todd is bringing all current and former GRITs kids. Are able to come and share, you know, kind of what impact it had on them, and.
Yeah.
So it's a fun, we have a time.
Pardon?
Do we have a time?
Let's see.
Yeah. I'm gonna say, I, I want to make it, I think it's around one o'clock.
We'll get, okay, we'll get, maybe.
There, there, yeah.
Communicate it out, um, that is, it's like a big deal, the, the House Education Committee is, uh, they're really busy individuals, and they have, if, they're the ones that really dictate any legislation that's going to go forward, so, um, I want to thank Rep. Marshall for coordinating that, he's on the education committee and really is the one that has facilitated that, I want to give my gratitude to him for that. And also, uh, Mayor-elect Emily McFadden, at the meeting we just came from, one of the things that was so hopeful to me, she's, I look forward to continuing to work with the schools. And for as long as I can remember, until this last four years, we have not had a partnership with, with our town. And I'm so grateful to have that, um, positive working relationship with them, and I hope we can continue that moving forward. With that, thank you all for being here, appreciate all that you do, and we'll close this meeting at eight forty-six.